Good evening. Welcome to the November 13th, 2017 Troy City Council Meeting. We are pleased this evening to have Pastor Simeon Timbuk from the... Okay, I want to get this right this time. Bethesda, Romanian Pentecostal Church with us to lead us in the invocation. If you would please rise for that and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Our heavenly Father, we come before you tonight. We are so thankful and grateful for your protection and the prosperity you blessed all of us. I ask you to bless the mayor, the council members, the new council member that is going to be sworn in, the new session that is going to start. Bless the city of Troy, our great state of Michigan, and the United States of America with your protection and guidance. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor. Troy City Council Meeting is now called to order. We have several... Well, let's not call it to order yet because I want to ask Paul McCollum to say some words before I call it to order. So, I think it's just great that Paul would come here this evening and ask to say a few words. So, Paul, I'll call on you.
Thank you Mayor. I'm a councilman for a couple more minutes, so I did want to make one brief statement. First and foremost, I would like to congratulate the very soon-to-be council member David Hamilton. He ran a great campaign as Clean Campaign. I got to know David fairly well throughout the course of the campaign. He did a really good job in getting to know him over the past several months. I know that he'll do very well. David, I wish you the best. I know you're going to do great. To my running mates, Ed and Ellen, I would like to thank you. It was a fun campaign. Ultimately, I wasn't successful, but I do wish you the best. I know you're going to continue to do great work, as you have done. When I, at least when I've been here over the past year, I can say that you've been great to work with, and I wish you the best. To city staff, I would like to thank Brian Kishnick in particular. I know you're here every Monday when I'm here. I know you've been working great and doing great work, and keep it up. Lori, you too, suffer through the meetings with us. Thank you for being professional, not letting naysayers get to you, and doing great work. Aileen, it's always been great to have you as our go-to on the right side. And then, the Chief of Police, I don't know if he's here tonight, but he's actually been a great resource for me in the past year. I've gone to him with a lot of questions, and he's really helped guide me. Finally, I would also like to thank one person who does not get thanked enough, and that's Cindy Stewart. Everywhere you go, everybody has someone who kind of hides behind the scenes and makes sure everything gets done on time and on target, and she's done a great job of that. Cindy is not thanked enough. She does a really great job. To the Charter Amendment, we were successful. We did have a no vote on the Charter Amendment, so I'm personally very happy to hear that. I guess I get to be the first one to comment on it tonight. It was a bit of a bumpy ride from July, but we got it done, and I'm very happy to see Finally, to Dane, you've come a long way. Thinking back to 2014, when I was not appointed, and then in '15, when I ran and was unsuccessful, and then finally last year, you have taught me more about leadership than I think you will ever know. You've done a great job. You are a calming and steadying force in your seat, and I appreciate everything you've done for me and for the city, and I thank you. And finally, to my family, being on City Council is a tough call. It takes a lot of time. It's often thankless, and oftentimes a little bit more than thankless. A lot of people are not too happy with you on a regular basis, but it's been a very interesting year, and I thank the people for giving me the opportunity to be up here, and I wish the best to the city of Troy.
Thank you, Paul. Very classy. Paul, let me be the first to say thanks to you for stepping up. I know it's tough to come here. I think this might be the first time that's ever happened, and very class act. Thank you for what you've done. Let me shake your hand. Now I will call the City Council Meeting to order, and we have a series of events that are going to take place before we move on to regular business. First is an installation ceremony, and I would like to call upon David Hamilton to come forward and be sworn in as the new City Council Member.
I.
I. David Hamilton.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the Charter of the City of Troy, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of City Council Member in and for the City of Troy, County of Oakland, State of Michigan, according to the best of my abilities, so help me out.
Thank you.
We are going to take a short break after the swearing-in of the mayor pro tem, so there'll be an opportunity to take photographs for a few minutes after that. Next, I'd like to call upon Councilwoman Ellen Hoderick to move forward for her swearing-in.
I.
Ellen Hoderick.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the Charter of the City of Troy, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of City Council Member in and for the City of Troy, County of Oakland, State of Michigan, according to the best of my abilities, so help me out.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to call upon Ed Pennington, City Council Member, to be sworn in.
I.
Ed Pennington.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the Charter of the City of Troy, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of City Council Member in and for the City of Troy, County of Oakland, State of Michigan, according to the best of my abilities, so help me out.
Congratulations to David, Ellen, and Ed. Thank you for your service. The roll call, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Slater.
Here.
Councilmember Abraham.
Here.
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Hoderick.
Here.
Councilmember Pennington.
Here.
All present, next on the agenda is adoption of the City Council Rules of Procedure. Councilman Baker.
I'd like to move the adoption of City Council Rules of Procedure resolved that Troy City Council hereby adopts the rules of procedure of the City Council of the City of Troy as recorded by the city clerk in the minutes of this meeting.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Baker and supported by Mayor Protem Hoderick that we adopt the city rules of procedure as printed in the agenda packet and read into record. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Slater.
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoderick.
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda is the appointment of Mayor Protem. The appointment of Mayor Protem, the selection of Mayor Protem rotates annually in the following order: Abraham, Baker, Hamilton, Henderson, Pennington, Hoderick. Would somebody like to move the resolution? Mayor Protem Hoderick.
I'd like to move that resolved that the Troy City Council hereby appoints Edna Abraham to serve as Mayor Protem for the City Council of the City of Troy for a term scheduled to expire at 7:30 PM on Monday, November 12th, 2018.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Protem Hoderick and supported by Councilman Baker that we appoint Councilwoman Abraham to serve as Mayor Protem for the City Council of the City of Troy for the term that is scheduled to expire at 7:30 PM on Monday, November 12th, 2018. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoderick.
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington.
Yes.
Mayor Slater.
Yes. Congratulations. Now I would ask that Mayor Protem, Councilmember Edna Abraham, go forward to be sworn in.
I.
I.
Edna Abraham. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the Charter of the City of Troy, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of Mayor Protem in and for the City of Troy, County of Oakland, State of Michigan, according to the best of my abilities, so help me out.
Congratulations, Edna. Let's take a five-minute break for photo opportunities. We will resume at 7:50.
The move resolved that Troy City Council hereby adopts the Code of Ethics of City Council of the City of Troy as recorded by the city clerk in the minutes of this meeting.
Moved by Councilman Baker and supported by Councilman Pennington that we approve the Code of Ethics for the City Council as read into record and printed in the agenda packet. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda is the adoption of Code of Ethics for City Council. Councilman Baker.
The move resolved that Troy City Council hereby adopts the Code of Ethics of City Council of the City of Troy as recorded by the city clerk in the minutes of this meeting.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Baker and supported by Councilman Pennington that we approved the Code of Ethics for the City Council as read into record and printed in the agenda packet. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington.
Yes.
Mayor Slater.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Abraham.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is the adoption of the Code of Ethics for Boards and Committees. Councilman Baker.
I'd like to move the adoption of Code of Ethics for Boards and Committees resolved that Troy City Council hereby adopts the Code of Ethics for Boards and Committees of the City of Troy as recorded by the city clerk in the minutes of this meeting.
Support.
I have to recognize that voice now. Moved by Councilman Baker and supported by Councilman Hamilton that we approve the ethics of Boards and Committees as read into the record and printed in the agenda packet. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington.
Yes.
Mayor Slater.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is the proposed resolution to allow Pennington Collision to remain on the list of eligible vendors. I'll read this into the record. Whereas the owner of Pennington Collision is also an elected City Council Member, and whereas Section 6.12A of the Troy City Charter requires that in order for there to be any possible business relationship between the city and a business in which a City Council Member or his or her immediate family has a pecuniary interest, the other City Council Members must agree unanimously to pass the resolution making the business eligible to conduct business with the City of Troy. So now therefore be it resolved that the Troy City Council hereby recuses Councilmember Pennington from voting, and be it further resolved that the Troy City Council declares that Pennington Collision is eligible to conduct business with the City of Troy as allowed by the Troy City Charter, Section 6.12A.
Support.
Moved by the Chair and supported by Mayor Protem Abraham that we approve the resolution to allow Pennington Collision to remain on the list of eligible vendors as read into the record and printed in the agenda packet. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Yes.
Mayor Slater.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is the Cooperative Purchasing Programs Resolution. Mayor Protem Abraham.
I will move Cooperative Purchasing Programs Resolution where as city administration recommends participation in the cooperative purchasing programs when it is in the best interest of the city. Therefore be it resolved that Troy City Council authorizes participation in cooperative purchasing programs listed below to satisfy bid requirements when in the best interest of the city. MI Deal, State of Michigan, Oakland County Cooperative Purchasing Program, Suburban Library Cooperative, REMC, Regional Media Center Association of Michigan, NIGP, U.S. Communities, MICTA, Michigan Collegiate Telecommunications Association, National IPA, National Intergovernmental Purchasing Alliance, NJPA, National Joint Power Alliance. Be it further resolved that Troy City Council approves blanket authorizations to administratively approve purchases for operating supplies and services above the $10,000 limit obtained through an approved cooperative, except for those capital 401 fund purchases which shall be presented to Troy City Council for review and approval.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Protem Abraham and supported by Councilman Baker that we approve the Cooperative Purchasing Programs Resolution as read into the record and printed into the agenda packet. Any discussion on that item? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington.
Yes.
Mayor Slater.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Motion passes. That concludes the installation ceremony in all subcategories. Next on the agenda, our certificates of recognition and special presentations. We have one this evening. I would ask Kelly Mullenar, the Assistant to the City Manager, to come forward and give us a positive update on the Frightful 5K.
I'd love to. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm Kelly Mullenar, Assistant to the City Manager, and today what I'm doing is talking about one of the best events that our community holds, which is our Frightful 5K, and engages a lot of our community members, including our City Council, to come out to the Troy Community Center and participate for our race. So below, you guys all have bags. I'm going to calm your swag bags. Let's all talk about them a little bit later, but we're going to start off with some footage that Stephanie in our office made. She's our marketing coordinator. She worked with a drone operator, so we'll start off with this. at the City of Troy. One of the coolest things is to run down Big Beaver, but this time we started and ended at the community center, and we had the most beautiful day. So we're going to get started with a quick presentation to show you guys a little bit about the event and hopefully get you excited for next year as well. So, the event started on Sunday, October 22nd, and we had an early check-in, but the race started at 8:00 AM, and we had over 245 returners from last year's event, and we had our 5K starting at 8:00, and then a 1K event starting at 9:00 AM. Both of them invited families, different generations, kids of all ages, new things, earning our Frightful Baskets for some of the Halloween costume contests that we have, which we'll talk about shortly as well. But this was special as well because this is a USA TF course certification, so a lot of runners that are in the community can participate for these to earn things and to get into the Boston Marathon. So it's kind of a big thing to be part of that, so our race was certified, which is a great addition. We had so many community partners this year. As you can see, our list, in your bags, you can see that our medals were made from Highest Honor, which is a Troy company. Our chalk was donated from Rite Aid. You can see here, the Explorers came out and helped. Tim Hortons came and gave coffee, and I know a lot of you guys wanted that because it was a little bit chilly to start off, but towards the end, I'm sure everybody wanted the water. Sedona in that photo came out, and they were giving water right along Big Beaver to some of the runners, so it was kind of exciting. And I also want to share that it wasn't only just the community partners. We had a lot of Troy School volunteers that came out that helped us along the route and gave out the water and things like that. Also, our city staff did a great job. I'll go on and list them in a second, but if you want to look at our Frightful 2016, which was our first year, compared to our 2017, we had more runners, we had more money in sponsorships, we spent a little bit more, which I'll share shortly, but we made more money as well. But I want to leave it, this is not to make money event. This is a big community engagement. We use our campus, we use our space, and we want to give back to our community and all the families. So we had a big closing ceremony this year. It was very nice to start and end at It was very nice to start and end at the community center, and I want to thank a lot of the City Council that came out to give out these awards and the ones that ran in as well, Hamilton, who dressed as Hamilton. And as well, a lot of people didn't know, but City Manager Brian Kishnik ran it, and he got onstage. I think a couple people were surprised to see him without his glasses, but a lot of participation from everyone involved. You can see some of our additional things that we added this year. We had gift baskets for our top female and our top male, our most creative costume, which a lot of you guys hugged and maybe kissed on the cheek, our T-Rex. So we also had our youth award winners, and then we had a DJ on site. We had these costume characters, Moana. I mean, people stayed afterwards. They had our vendors who this year donated their money to have snacks at their tables instead of towards us. I mean, we really used the space that we had, and knew this year, you can see onstage, the 1K runners came up and got medals too. So one of the coolest things about our medals is we can reuse them again next year. Highest Honor is going to repurpose them and give us new lanyards. We have a lot of the things that we can reuse. The characters gave a good benefit, all the families to come out. It was one of the best things, and I kind of want to end at this. As you can see, Kara Sokol, she works for the City of Ferndale, and I reached out to her on Facebook, because she posted along the whole event, basically she's excited. She had her bib with her cat on a bed, but she wanted to share with me that not only her, but her father, and then her sister, and then this newborn in the picture, as you can see, Elliot, they all participated in the 5K event. They ran with Elliot in a stroller, and she said this is Elliot's first medal, and this is a new family tradition for them to be healthy and active. And I reached out to her, and I said, "Thank you," and she goes, "I can't believe you reached out to me." This is what community engagement is. So I really look forward to working with you guys again next year. This is a family event. We have a date set for October 21st of 2018. But once again, thanking city staff, the DPW with Kurt, our Streets Guys, which was Mike Sakner with George and Tracy, who made some custom signs for us. We had the Streets Guys who swept the community center within seconds. That's Mike Vehalik. We had the Recreation Department, Sam and Brian Ghul, who really stayed after and helped out. Of course, Cindy, she was onstage, kind of handling you guys. Brooke in HR helped out. Our Engineering Department got the road closure. I mean, Sean and Stephanie in our office, I can't thank everybody. We had a really good turnout, and we really look forward to you guys next year. So I'm open for any questions, but I can't thank you enough. Please take home the bags, and if you need any other swag that's in the bag, just let me know.
Thank you. Councilman Baker?
I'll add a question mark at the end, but I want to say, Kelly, I know that you worked very hard. We all do at this event, and you worked really hard to get extra sponsorships this year, and a lot of the additional success we had is because of you, so I thank you for that. And that wasn't a question, but it was a comment. Then I also will say, you saw the drone footage. It really is cool to run on Big Beaver. I've said it like eight times now, but I mean, if you didn't see in the video, it's amazing. It's a beautiful part of our city that you usually see going very fast, so.
Thank you.
It's nice to be on foot and see it. But thank you, Kelly, for all your hard work.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Hamilton?
Oh, I just want to say, this is the first 5K I ever ran, and of course, it was costume, but no. It was a phenomenal event. Me and my wife really appreciate everything you did. And I didn't even know that it was profitable. That's amazing. It was a fantastic event, so thank you.
That's the fluff that Tom liked.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Kelly. It was a great event. I wish I would have made it onto the vehicle to lead it, but things happen.
Exactly. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're lucky you didn't make it on another vehicle. Ambulance.
It was my athletic ability that prevailed there. That concludes certificates of recognition and special presentations. There are no carryover items this evening or public hearings. I don't see that anyone has signed up for public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. There are no postponed items, so we will move to regular business. I I is a Board and Committee Appointments. I have two mayoral appointments this evening. I would like to appoint Lisa Beka Grodsky and Rebecca Chamberlain Krenga to the Global Troy Advisory Committee for the terms that expire 10/30/2020.
Support.
Moved by the Chair, supported by Councilwoman Hoderick. It's my first time.
I know, switching.
Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Motion passes, and thank you to both of them for getting reappointed to that great Global Troy Advisory Committee, and thank you for their service. There are no City Council Appointments this evening. I I, our Board and Committee nominations, there are no nominations from the mayor position or City Council position this evening. So we will move to I III. There was a yellow sheet laid on the table this evening for a request for closed session if someone would like to move that. Councilman Henderson?
I'd like to move I III closed-session request. Resolved that Troy City Council shall meet in closed session as permitted by MCL 15.268E pending litigation, Galt versus City of Troy et al.
Support.
By Councilman Henderson, supported by Councilman Baker, that Troy City Council shall meet in closed session as permitted by MCL 15.268E pending litigation, Galt versus City of Troy et al. Any discussion on that? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes. I IV is an amendment to the Troy City Code, Chapter 93, Fire Prevention, and Chapter 60, Fees and Bonds Required. I see Chief Dave Roberts and Assistant Fire Chief Chuck Reister coming forward. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Every three years, the state of Michigan adopts the International Construction Code, International Building Code, as the state's construction code. Michigan, however, is yet to adopt a statewide fire prevention code, and instead they leave that responsibility up to the local municipality. So every three years, the fire department adopts a companion code, which is the International Fire Code, to avoid any conflict between enforcing the building code and the fire code. Tonight with me is, as you see, is Assistant Chief Chuck Reister. He's also a fire marshal, and he's going to briefly go over some of the highlights of the changes that we made to Chapter 93 and Chapter 60.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mayor, Council? Several sections of the fire code were updated to balance out the existing coverage with the International Fire Code in our amendments. Most of those adjustments were made because of code sections that were repeated within the fire code that we had already adopted within our local ordinance. Some of these sections have to do with fire systems, fire suppression systems, and fire alarm systems that were already covered in the current version of the code, so we didn't need to keep them anymore, and they were eliminated. We added a couple of sections regarding vehicle impact protection for fire hydrants and utility devices, and all that does is bring us in line with Troy's engineering standard. And distance for demolition dumpsters from buildings was increased from five feet to 10 feet. In the event that those catch fire, we want them farther away from the building. As far as Chapter 60 with our fees and bonds, prior to the market crash in 2008, the city had established a permitting process which allowed us to charge a fee for applications for hazardous materials permits and permits for alarm systems, suppression systems, and such. After the market crash, we started to see an increase in the complaints regarding the amount of fees that we were charging for our hazardous materials permits. One of my responsibilities as a fire marshal is to review that process and review those fees to make sure that we're staying in line with the business. So what we did was, we took a look at the fee structure, and I've re-proposed our permit fees so they're adjusted to reflect what our actual time and materials costs are instead of just a flat rate. Okay? In an effort to work in a partnership with our business, what we've done is modified the fee structure to reflect those costs to those who are required to have a permit to either store, use, or produce hazardous materials. So we'd be happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions, Councilman Hamilton?
Yeah, I was just wondering, what's the change in the fees between what there is now and what with the code? What percentage more or less would it be?
Percentage-wise, it's actually, it's a few dollars more because it worked out that the individual costs were about $90 an hour, and what we took into account was not only the cost of the individual that has to do the plan review, that has to go out and do the site visit, but we also took into cost of the utilities at City Hall, the use of the vehicle, the gas and oil, things like that. Everything that costs extra that aren't covered by your regular taxes. The big change would be on our hazardous materials permit fee. Those were lowered because, as I said, those were a flat-rate fee, and now what we've done is we've also built in a procedure that if somebody re-appeals for their annual permit and they get it in on time and there's no changes, there's really not much work for us to do. So we can do a quick review, do a site visit, as long as nothing's changed, it's a $100 permit renewal fee.
Thank you. Any other council comments or questions? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Somebody would like to move the resolution? Councilman Pennington?
I'd like to move I IV, Amendments to Troy City Code, Chapter 93, Fire Prevention, and Chapter 60, Fees and Bonds Required, as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Pennington and supported by Councilwoman Hoderick that we approve I IV, the Amendments to the Troy City Code, Chapter 93, Fire Prevention, and Charter 60, Fees and Bonds Required, as printed in the agenda packet. Further discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Protam Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes. Thanks for your work on that, Chief. Next is the Consent Agenda. Anyone wish to pull a Consent Agenda item this evening? Councilman Baker?
I'd like to pull J4J, Standard Purchasing Resolution 2, Low Bitter Meeting Specifications, Trails and Pathways, paving Phase 1.
Thank you. Any other? Councilman Henderson?
I'd like to move all items on the Consent Agenda with the exception of J4A.
Support.
I'm sorry, J4J.
Yes.
J.
Support that.
Moved by Councilman Henderson, supported by Councilman Pennington, that we approve all items on the Consent Agenda as presented with the exception of J4J, which shall be considered after the Consent Agenda items. Any discussion? I would just like to point out that the funds that are expended for the Troy Youth Assistance and the Troy Community Coalition are well-deserved monies that are spent towards programs that I think are a perfect example of a public-private partnership. They do things that free up our police department in order to focus on other types of incidences and issues that these particular groups are much more, they have much more experience and do a much better job than we would do. So it's a great partnership. I just want to point out what great work they do, and they are one of the many that were cut during our problem years, and it's good to see the money be appropriated back to these worthwhile organizations. So I just wanted to point that out. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Abraham?
Yes.
Motion passes. Councilman Baker, did you wish to have Kurt Bolgansy come forward?
I do. Wish.
Good evening, Kurt.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Basically, Kurt, I pulled this because I understand the cost that we're allocating tonight for the Phase 1 is less than originally projected, and I'd like to hear a little bit about the status of that and why it's less, and some good news. Sure. I like giving good news. So originally, the trails and pathways for the first phase, which was connect Big Beaver through the Civic Center, Dog Park, up through the water resource, Zion Christian Church and Walsh, was estimated at $750,000. The Dog Park portion was actually paved today. They're three-quarters of the way through by in-house staff. So what's before you tonight is a contract for the phase that goes through Zion Christian Church, Walsh College Water Resource Commission property, connecting wattles to the Dog Park. That was permitted by the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality, and with our consultant, Hubel-Wathan Clark, it was identified that it was not advantageous to propose boardwalk to go across some of the wetland areas that we originally thought. Elevated boardwalk has a cost of about $650 a linear foot. It was determined that we would actually put an application in that would disturb those wetlands less by putting in a couple culverts and doing a little fill and diverting some of that water. DAQ approved it, and they agreed with that, so we did not have to put the elevated boardwalk, which is an approximate cost savings of $200,000 to the original estimate. To continue on with the Trails and Pathways connectivity, one of the strategies this year is to identify the neighborhood node segments and continue trail and pathway connectivity, and we have had trail and pathway committee meetings, and we're working on identifying those node segments that are most important to the committee. The committee is made up of people, runners, walkers, city staff, even some opposition to the trail and pathway. So we have a really good balance of that committee, and we had a great discussion the other day, and we're putting all that information into an image so we can bring that back to council in December to identify those nodes and what we feel is the best way to start connecting those nodes.
Very good. Very good. Good news. Thank you. Any other questions? Councilman Baker, would you like to move that resolution?
All right. I'd like to move J4J, Standard Purchasing Resolution 2, Low Bitter Meeting Specifications, Trails and Pathways, paving Phase 1, as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Baker and supported by Mayor Protam Abraham that we approve J4J as printed in the agenda packet. Further discussion? Councilwoman Hoderick?
I just wanted to comment that if you're entering this discussion with us just at this juncture on the Trails and Pathways, just a little background, this was Trails and Pathways, it was identified through surveys consistently as one of the top priorities for our residents. And we looked at a very serious option of what we wanted to do to try to affect that and bring that to reality for our residents a few years ago, where we were looking to get a matching grant to match our city dollars with a grant to, and I'm simplifying this story, to start and connect the Trails and Pathways. The grant-making entity, we weren't able to come up with a plan that met their requirements, and so we set that aside. We went through a pretty painful process of trying to do that and worked very hard to do that. This discussion tonight is a really positive step because what we said is, okay, that didn't work. What can work? And I appreciate those that are participating in the dialogue about the nodes and what makes sense for what we can do, including those who are against the idea, because there's a voice there at the table to help us create that balance. And I just really want to applaud staff for continuing to pursue this in the fashion that we have, and this has been a logical place now. We set that other plan aside. Where can we start to do this? When you read about this in cities across the nation where they've done this, where they just get started, the value to the community and the residents is tremendous. And it's just, this is a nice milestone tonight to see this coming into play, and to know that we're really looking and evaluating it, what we can do, what we have to do, and save the dollars as best we can is, thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. If you were here on a consent agenda item this evening, they've all been approved. Next are memorandums and future council agenda items. There was a yellow sheet placed on the council desk this evening with an addition. The K-1 announcements for public hearings are, A is on November 20th, 2017, a rezoning application file number Z-JPLN-2017-0023, proposed 901 Tower Drive, north of West Long Lake, east side of Crooks, Section 09, from RC, which is Research Center, to OM, which is Office Mixed Use District. So there'll be a public hearing at the next meeting for that. Also, on November 20th, 2017, the Community Development Block Grant, better known as CDBG Program, 2018 application will be up for public hearing. Next on the agenda are public comment from items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses, and I'll call upon Linus Stonies, Troy resident who wishes to speak. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm going on my 34th year as a resident of the City of Troy. I congratulate the newly-elected council member and also re-elected members. I'm going to get down to the brass tacks. And what I'm concerned, and I've never been involved or attended any city council meeting before, but my concern is, as paraphrasing Ronald Reagan, our U.S. President, probably the best president of the 20th century, if not all-time president, is that the citizens are not undertaxed. It's the government who overspends. And what I witnessed this past summer has caught my attention. There's a lovely, very attractive lady, young lady, who has a desk inside the hallway from the east entrance of this building. She told me, and one of her staff members told me, she gets thirty-five thousand dollars a year. Just a foot behind her is a placard listing all the city offices and arrows going every which way. What are we trying to do here? Sort of, why with that U.S. Pentagon? This is a small administration building, city building. Why is thirty-five thousand dollars wasted on such a needless so-called service? If the city has money to burn, why don't you give it to me? There are many streets in the City of Troy that have cracks going right across the street that for thirty-five thousand dollars could be filled with liquid tar and so forth. And they've been in existence for the last six years, and they're growing bigger. And if that is not enough, I will gladly take and donate to some worthy causes such as Shriners Children's Hospital or St. Jude Children's Research Hospital. But these things is nothing but a simple waste. If the money has too much money to burn, why don't you return them to the taxpayers? It seems that it's been always an ongoing process from the federal government, state, county, and city, that whenever there's a surplus of money, there have to be invented some needless, needless services just to spend them. And I'm just going to just simply end at that. I hope that you take, you know, interest in that because there are many people like myself who have undergraduate and graduate degrees and so forth, but I have never have received or receiving any from my previous employers.
Mr. Stonies, that concludes your three minutes. Thank you for your comments.
And I also want to just simply say, next time, I hope it's going to be five minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes those that have signed up to speak on public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. Next is an opportunity to reply to public comment from council or administration. Anyone wish to do that this evening? Councilman Henderson?
Just to address that particular situation, I realize that, you know, we've discussed this for the last couple of years with regard to wayfinding within City Hall. And it was identified that people do have difficulty navigating through the building and along the campus. And as I recall, I believe the woman that was hired is multilingual, so there are some benefits of that as well in this community with as many languages as we speak. So I'm a proponent of having that particular person there, but I'm sure there's differing opinions.
I'm sure there is. Mr. Stonies, I would just ask if you want to contact city administration, there's a good explanation why that is there. And sometimes if you hear what the explanation is, it may satisfy your comments. But I would ask you to reach out to city staff. Thank you. Next, Mr. Stonies, that concludes the conversation this evening. No, sir. Next on the agenda are council referrals. N1 is a council referral from myself, Councilmember Henderson, and Councilmember Hoderick. I'm going to move this resolution to get it on the table for discussion. Resolved that Detroit City Council hereby directs city administration to schedule a city council study session at the earliest opportunity to discuss the following. Discussion of the process to determine if Civic Center proposals for redevelopment will be considered. Secondly, opportunities and strategies for public engagement, and opportunities and strategies for green space preservation. Moved by the chair, supported by Councilman Baker, that we approve the council referral from myself, Councilmember Henderson, City Councilmember Hoderick, as printed in the agenda packet. Now discussion. Councilman Hamilton?
Yeah, thank you for doing this referral. In the last few months, knocking on doors, and I strongly supported the no vote, but the message was clear that people clearly in the city want us to preserve green space more. So I think this is a good first step towards that. And I know whatever development there is on the Civic Center, I support putting the Civic Center project itself on the ballot. Not what the charter amendment was, I thought it went too far, but I would support the Civic Center project itself going on the ballot. I also would like us to explore starting a green space advisory board like our neighbors in Rochester Hills had. So I'm going to start communicating with them to see how theirs works and try to propose something here as well. So thank you for putting this referral.
Thank you. And I would just point out that this is a resolution to have a study session.
Right.
Not to sit at the table and discuss what's going to be in the study session itself. So, Councilman Henderson?
Yeah, so this is not a unique idea. This is something that, as I've spoken with just about every person on council, we're in agreement with. You know, the yes-no vote on this particular charter amendment was divisive. Thank God it's over, and we can get on about the city's business. And, you know, I think that the people have spoken, they want say on this property, completely understood. We were on a journey to try to discover what could be done here, and that was kind of, the brakes were put on that. So I'm a proponent of moving this forward so that we can have that discussion and determine, you know, do we want that project? Do we want something less than that project? Do we want nothing? And, you know, so as we move forward with a study session or several study sessions, as we go into August, which would be the next election, or November after that, you know, maybe we can put something on a ballot so that people can give us an up-and-down vote. But the people have to understand that whatever we put on a ballot is not a binding situation. It's simply just allowing us to get a feel for what the people really want. So just allow us that latitude. Let us continue the project. Let us keep talking. Let us keep discovering. And August or November, you know, maybe we will come together with some sort of language. So that's the problem, is the language. What do we put in a question even?
Councilwoman Hoderick?
One of my very favorite movie lines provides a perfect description of one of our key challenges with this discussion. From the movie Cool Hand Luke, what we have here is a failure to communicate. And I feel like that was at the root of why we ended out in the brouhaha we've been in in the past couple of months. There's a communication failure on multiple levels. Councilwoman Abraham and I spoke from this table from study sessions about the importance of ensuring an outreach to our residents as we were simply exploring options. If we had come up with something to put on a ballot, we would have. We hadn't even gotten that far. Those who know me well know that communication is my professional background. That's my wheelhouse. I regret the role I played in the communication failure. I will own and take responsibility for not following up further with staff and for not pushing harder for it to happen faster and more comprehensively. I could have done a better job, and I should have. I'll personally own that. By the time meetings occurred with residents, the lack of information vacuum that was out there created bad information. And so the ability for us to communicate effectively with one another as a community fell apart. Because communication involves also listening to one another. And the listening just wasn't an aspect of the dialogue any longer. Now, that's my self-reflection. When I look back, what I could have done differently. I think we can all take a step back and say, gee, what would we have done differently four or five months ago? What I like about this idea of this study session being scheduled is it's an opportunity to press a reset button for all of us. I think you have a city council here that really wants to work with residents through this discussion. If we can reset, if we can set the political propaganda aside and really a lot of miscommunication, there was a lot of bad information out there. When you knock doors and when you were taking calls, you could hear the misinformation. If we could commit to one another to hit a reset button and start over and work through this, I think that would be best for our community now and for its future. A study session that allows us to really understand the facts of the matter, what an RFQ is, what it isn't, where we were in the process, what we could do about evaluating green space. Let us study that and study with us. Join the session, watch it on television. Let's, as a community, together. It's kind of like we were in a big marital spat, and we've gone off in our separate places. Let's take a deep breath and then reconvene in the kitchen over coffee, and let's work this through. We can do this. We are a smart, brilliant, caring community. People have points from all sides that are valid, but we need to bring them to the table constructively and without a political crazy that came into play and prevents us from discerning and coming to a good solution. So if this study session can be a first step, if we can join together, that's where I'm coming from on supporting this resolution.
Thank you. Mayor Protam Abraham?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for bringing this referral forward. I think it's a fantastic idea. I think it is a natural next step in healing the wounds and breaching the divide that's occurred over the past three months. I think it's been a while since the community has been so torn up. And the fact that we have this opportunity to come together, have honest dialogue, share information and opinions in a constructive way, and not just at this study session, but continuing forward. I was really pleased to see how the resolution was worded because it talks about the process. I think part of that discussion will naturally include definition of checkpoints of, do we still want to keep going forward? And I don't, I would agree with Councilwoman Hoderick. I don't think it was articulated well what those checkpoints were. At what point may we get to where we say, you know what, this just doesn't make sense? And that may not be in November of 2018. That could be in May of 2018, where we get to a checkpoint and look at the data dispassionately. We hear feedback from the community that tells us, maybe we don't want to go forward with this, or maybe we need to redirect. And maybe it's not in November of 2018. Let this process be what it needs to be, and let it be something that the community and the council define together. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Baker?
I have a quick question for the city attorney first. Does this language, I mean, is this broad enough language for us to have a free-for-all discussion on development of Civic Center in general? Or are we required to have certain language that allows for that? This talks about process. I mean, are we allowed to discuss other components of potential development or not development as part of that? Or do we need to have a different wording to allow for that?
It is pretty broad, and, you know, again, it does say discussion of the process. And so with that, it's going to be tangentially related what Civic Center development proposals could be. So yes, it is, I think it's broadly worded so that it will suit your goals.
Just making sure. Can I continue?
I do, sorry. I thank the three of you for bringing this referral forward. I'm pretty sure any one of the seven of us could and would have brought it forward had it not been put on our agenda for us. Obviously, it was a difficult summer in our city in many ways, and I am thankful that we are past that point and hopefully can come back together and work on some of these things. You know, I think that it's clear to me after seeing what happened and the election results, you know, over 7,200 people voted yes on that charter amendment. And I know a good portion of the people who voted no were also potentially not for development of the Civic Center. So, you know, we need to definitely have a study session and talk about what we as a council can do to get the community involved for further discussion, whether or not we even want to have further discussion. I mean, I think that's a very valid possibility. I am thankful that, I'm sorry, I believe that it may take more than one study session, at least based on how things have gone. And I believe that because, you know, over the past couple of months, I really thought about this. None of us on this council ran on a platform of redeveloping our Civic Center. So to me, I realized, you know, that is a decision that is such a broad and huge change for our city that it does demand more than just city council's decision-making, in my opinion. So I can see how valuable and important it would be to have a vote on a ballot to determine whether or not we have any kind of development. I think there's issues as to how we word that, which is something we'll get to discuss. But, you know, that, as something that's transformational for our city as any kind of potential development on the Civic Center property, I think it is wise to have the people more involved. So I'm thankful we had this opportunity. I think we will be able to come together as a community, as a council, together, and come up with the best process for moving forward, whatever that may be. So thank you for bringing this referral.
Any other comments? Councilman Pennington?
Yes, I also want to thank council for bringing this forward. My whole platform on getting reelected was the defeat of the charter amendment, and everyone knows that. Now we're going to do exactly what we said we were going to do. And I appreciate Councilman Hoderick for falling on her sword and, you know, taking blame for the lack of communication, but it was not us that spun all the disinformation on this charter amendment. So now that failed, we can all move forward and heal the city, and I appreciate everything everyone did so far. Now we're going to do exactly what we said we were going to do.
Thank you. And thank you for all those comments. I'm going to move forward. I'm not going to... I'm not going to take the opportunity that probably we could to talk about why this was, why this charter amendment was brought forward and all of that nonsense. I think it's just time to move forward. And I know when I met with Councilmember Henderson and Councilmember Hoderick to discuss putting this language on this resolution, we did it for a purpose and that was to make it so that we could pretty much discuss anything. With the help of the city attorney and city manager, I think we've done that. As you know, we're not allowed to talk to any other members other than three, so we wanted to make sure that we listened to what other council members had said in the past month. We took a look at Councilman Hamilton's literature and what he ran on regarding the green space and some of the comments that I've gotten, the emails that I've gotten. And, believe me, there's a lot of people that would like us to take a look at the Civic Center, realizing that these buildings are getting old and the aquatic center is getting old and the library is getting old and you're going to have to make decisions on what you do with these buildings and who's going to pay for them. So there's a lot of people out there that understand the process that we were in and we had to stop because of this charter amendment. I think we would have gotten to where we are today if we were allowed to continue. I firmly believe that. Maybe we could have done things differently quarterback, you know, Monday morning quarterback is easy. But the point is, let's start over and let's give it a new, fresh look. So, the vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Motion passed. As I would just ask if you could look at some dates quickly. Thank you. Next on the agenda is council comments. Any council comments this evening? Councilman Baker?
Just like to formally welcome Councilman Hamilton to our table and look forward to working with you. And I know you ran a good race and Paul touched on it earlier, but you worked hard and we welcome you and I welcome you. I'm sure everybody else does too.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Councilman Hamilton.
I just wanted to, just to express that besides my wife agreeing to marry me, this is the greatest honor of my life to be chosen to represent the city that I grew up in and was born and raised in. So I just want to express to everyone how thankful I am to the thousands of people I talk to knocking on doors and on the phone. I'm listening. My door is always open. My phone's always available. Please continue to contact me and thank you for, everyone on the council has always been very kind and welcoming to me and supportive and I thank you for that. Every single member of the council has been, so. And to Councilman Pennington and Councilwoman Hoderick, and to former Councilman McCowen, you all ran very clean campaigns. You were always, again, supportive and I thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Henderson.
Welcome, David. You will always be David around me. We don't need that confusion. But I want to take the opportunity, this is Movember, hence the beard, and I can't wait till it's over so I can get rid of this thing. But I had, it's just an awareness thing and I know some of the city staff are participating as well, but I had a bout with prostate cancer about six years ago. And thankfully, I caught it early. Early detection is the key. So I take this opportunity every year just to remind men, I was 49 years old. So, you know, everybody thinks 50, 60 is kind of when you got to start worrying about that. No, earlier is better. And the earlier you catch things like that, the more treatable and the less severe the treatments are. So thankfully, I'm one of those early detector guys and my outcome was very good. So, men, get your checkups.
Councilman Pennington.
Last week, we celebrated Veterans Day. They had a ceremony here at the city that I could not attend. Fridays are very busy at Pennington Collision, keep me hopping. But I wanted to give a shout out to all our veterans that work at the city and are retired and live in the city. My dad was in the Army, my son's in the Navy. I've been a patriot my whole life and hats off to all that have served. Our generation, my generation did not have to serve, but I salute all those that did. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Any comments from Councilwoman Hoderick?
I just wanted to thank everyone who voted and participated in the process. No matter how you voted, I'm glad people are engaged and that was the silver lining, I think, of the cloud that hung over us the past couple of months. Knocking doors, talking to people everywhere, no matter where they stood on issues such as the charter, we live in a beautiful community of people that when you really do start talking and thinking things through together, it's really a very positive experience. Quite honestly, knocking doors is scary when you're running. And it always amazes me that I can get over that fear pretty quickly because people answer their door and start to talk to you. And our neighbors, our fellow residents are really awesome people. I'm really proud to be able to represent people to the best of my ability. I'm proud of serving with everyone here. I want to welcome David, Councilman Hamilton, Councilman Pennington. It was great running with you again and I'm looking forward to serving with you and all of you here on council. I think you can sense there is a team here. We don't always agree. In fact, we've disagreed pretty strongly, but we tend to really work hard to come back together. I remember disagreeing with Councilman Pennington one night. We had heated discussion and the next day at lunchtime, there was a phone call from him and he was simply saying, are we okay? And we were okay. And we moved on to our next discussions. So that's the part of this experience that is very positive. I hope it can go from this table and from this experience in the elected chairs to those of you who are equally valuable to the process, that we can do the same altogether. I really want to thank my husband for supporting me when I run. It's really us that are serving, the two of us, left brain, right brain. You get a whole brain when I come and sit here at the table because he does give me a lot of really valuable, wise input and I really appreciate his involvement. My children as well. My East Coast campaign rep was my daughter who lives in the D.C. area, who still cheers the city on tremendously and is greatly involved. And I really appreciate her. She's a great typo catcher. Whether it's during the campaign or even otherwise, she helps to pay attention to things. And my son Greg, who lives here locally, works here and families give a lot of support to the people that are in these seats or on the boards and committees. So let's be good to one another as we work through our challenges and opportunities. We deserve it, all of us. And this did get very difficult. It got heated. It got political. We've been there before in this community and set it aside. We can do it again and I look forward to helping be part of that process. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I just have two things I'd like to bring up and they involve study sessions. We postponed a study session with the planning department two days before the election. And I would like to see if we could get consensus from the table to have the administration set up another meeting with the planning commission, probably after the study session with, to discuss Civic Center development. So I was wondering if we could get consensus for that. Thank you. I don't see any need to do that before the first of the year, though. We have very limited December and Thanksgiving. The other issue I'd like to see is a study session. I really think we need to get together with another study session to discuss this medical marijuana issue. We have a new council member that I don't believe has been part of the past study sessions. And I don't know about members of council, but I get emails constantly from people associated with medical marijuana that want an opportunity to be part of a study session so that we all can get educated on all sides of this and come to a real good, firm, educated decision. So if I could get consensus to set up a study session for the medical marijuana issue and kind of leave it up to the administration as to who, obviously want city attorney to be part of that, but we may want to reach out to some other entities so that we can hear all sides of this. So if I can get consensus on that. Councilman Pennington.
This would be after the other study sessions.
Well, we have a time limit on a decision through the medical marijuana. It was originally December 15th, but my understanding is that's gotten pushed back. Is that correct?
Mayor, the date of December 15th is the first date that the applications will be available through the state of Michigan. So that's not the date that they'll actually be issued. So, but that is, that is the date that is, that is out there, that will be the first available time that somebody can get one of the facility's licenses.
Seems to me we might want that study session before the planning commission, personally, because there are some deadlines.
After the study session on the Civic Center.
Correct.
Yes, that makes sense.
Correct. Councilwoman Hoderick.
Pardon my confusion. Didn't we have to make a decision by year end about opting in?
If you wanted to opt in, the first available, you have to opt in. The city would have to opt in in order for any persons to be eligible from the state of Michigan for a license. So you cannot apply to the state of Michigan for a license unless the municipality has opted in. However, there is no time limit as to when that can happen. You may lose, however, some, if you had some businesses who wanted to locate here and others, communities have opted in already, some of these businesses may go to other communities. So that is something that you do need to keep in mind.
So that would be December 15th?
December 15th is the first date that they'll accept the applications. However, there's a processing time at the state level and I suspect that there may be a number of applications that they get. So I think it will be sometime before the first, before the first licenses are issued by the state.
Seems like we might want to have a study session before the end of the year. If there's, if there's a timeline, if there is a time issue, but I don't know if we have time to do that. Mayor Protem Abraham.
I appreciate your position and being mindful of when the first application deadlines are in. I just feel more compelled to prioritize the Civic Center discussion given where this community is at and the opinion shared in moving our community forward. I appreciate there is a risk to moving the medical marijuana study session to be after that, that there is a potential impact to the community, but I think the Civic Center is more top of mind for our community and that is my preference.
I don't have any problem with that person either. It looks like there's consensus for both. And maybe if you've gotten some emails or some information from persons that you think you may want to have them contact the city manager or maybe the city manager can work with the city attorney and put together a panel, so to speak, so that we can, we can get educated and make a good educated decision, if we could. Does that sound good?
Mayor, could I just summarize here to make sure I've got the order correct? We're going to set a study session as soon as possible for the Civic Center.
Right.
And then secondly, we're going to set a study session for medical marijuana with a panel after that. And we'll bring these dates at the next meeting, right after our office goes through the process of seeing availability. And then we'll schedule the city council planning commission study session after the first of the year.
Correct.
Councilman Henderson.
We, I know you and I have spoken about the length of a study session on the Civic Center or potential Civic Center process. And, you know, when we have an hour before a meeting, that turns into about 40 minutes of valuable conversation, which isn't near enough probably to give this. So.
We'll schedule it for an off-city council night.
Sounds good. I'd say at least two hours.
Yep.
That'll be your decision, right? Because we'll just schedule it for 6 o'clock and when you end, you end.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay. We got it. Next on the agenda are the reports. Are there any comments regarding the reports in the agenda packet this evening? I don't see that anyone has signed up for comments on items on or not on the agenda from members of the public outside of Troy, which are not residents of Troy and not from Troy businesses. There is a closed session request this evening, so I want to thank everyone for coming this evening. We will be in recess and adjourned in the boardroom for a closed session. Thank you.[1783.46][1783.46]